I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Here.
Mayor Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniek?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Community development director?
Here.
Police chief?
Here.
Fire chief?
Here.
City engineer?
Here.
Full call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items limited to five minutes.
Andrew Stafford, 275 Furt Street. I am the Director of Economic Development with the Chamber and the point person for the DDA. Just regarding the Thoroughbred Boat Show on September 14th, the application has been spread throughout the DDA. Our board members had the chance to look at it. No one had any qualms with it, and we're making a recommendation to approve that street closure. This is going to be a process that's going to be implemented going forward. Just having more DDA involvement with the decision to close a street in the DDA district. We received requests from the city manager. We've heard some requests from city council, as well as the Chief of Police, as well as our own board, to get more involved with that decision-making process and us having a voice. So, we were able to draft a letter and have that before you tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rick Ketsworth. I live at 1405 Cornell Street in Manistee. I am here tonight on behalf of me wanting to acquire property at 1018 High Street. It was a vacant lot that was blighted by the city. There was an old home on it, and the city tore it down. My only desire for this lot is I grew up in that area. Matter of fact, Ms. Aaron, that was my mother and dad's house that we lived in for 45 years. And I have a best friend that lived right behind me, and then I had another best friend that lived at the other corner of that block. And that lot is, overviews the backyards and everything. The lot in its current condition, the whole house was torn down. There's garbage there. It's overgrown. And I just merely want to, again, with cooperation from the city, Mr. Gamble, I want to purchase that lot and kind of clean it up, pick up the garbage, and perhaps build someday. Then I'm not sure. If I want to downsize, it would be the perfect lot. I know Maxwell Town has challenges with bringing in new homes, but again, to have that opportunity to grow up and to proceed in my old neighborhood would be wonderful. So, thank you for your considerations this evening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters prior to approval. Any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of meeting. Items include approval of minutes, payroll invoices, quarterly investment report, consideration of the Manistee Lions Club White Cane Days. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniek?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Introduction of Mr. Toby Van Ness, the Code Enforcement Officer.
Good evening. Just want to introduce myself. I've, just to give you a little bit of background, I have been in local politics for over 20 years. I was township supervisor for 12 down in Ottawa County, township treasurer on the Planning Commission, zoning board of appeals, zoning administrator. So, I've had my share of local politics for quite some time before that. And actually, during that time as well, I've been a small business owner since probably the late 80s. So, got some experience in that and looked at the, I retired in 2020, right after COVID, and I got bored. So, started looking again to get back in the workforce and do something part-time. And I saw this on Indeed, and we jumped all over it. And so far, I've been at it for three weeks, and I truly enjoy it.
You live in Manistee County? You live in Ottawa County or Manistee County?
Currently, Mason County.
Mason County, okay.
Yes. Yep. Yep. So, we've been at it for three weeks. We've got about 18 pending locations already that either have had tickets or citations. And we are out and about in the community and looking for blight, and would recommend that any of you have any issues, please contact me, the police department, and I'd be glad to go out and take a look and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll be busy. Thank you. Introduction of Council Kelly, Administrative Assistant for the Community Development Departments.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that, I just dropped my watch. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the opportunity to work in the Planning and Zoning Office with Teresa and Jerry. And it is truly exciting. I thought when I applied for it that it might be a little bit boring, and it has not been at all. So, I just want to say that I did spend quite a few years working with the city police department in Paris, Tennessee. So, I am familiar with a lot of the comings and goings, but it is different, and I have a lot to learn. And it's kind of exciting because I feel like I'm getting a chance to reinvent myself for the second half of my life. So, I really appreciate the opportunity, and they've been very welcoming and patient. And I live here in Manistee, and I have a house, and I just love it here. Michigan is my happy place. So, does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll have a presentation from the Manistee County Land Bank. I think Katie. Oh, sorry. I couldn't see you there.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Mauth, planning director for Manistee County. But tonight, I am, I'm here on behalf of the Land Bank Authority. So, in early 2024, the county planning department was designated as staff to the Land Bank Authority, and we've had a lot going on. It was really good timing. I'm sure you guys have seen in the paper some of the blight funding that's come into the, into the county because of the Land Bank Authority. So, I just wanted to come before you all tonight. And this was something that the authority members had asked of me, being staff, is to get out to all of our local units of government, do a brief presentation, and make sure that everybody knows that we exist and has at least a high-level understanding of what the Land Bank Authority is and how it can be a resource to your community. So, with that, I will just jump right into it. So, a land bank is designed to acquire and maintain vacant, abandoned, and tax delinquent properties, and to use the legal authority granted to it through the applicable state statute to return these properties to productive use. So, land banking in Michigan began with Public Act 258 of 2003, the Land Bank Fast-Track Act. So, Michigan just celebrated our 20 years of land banking. The state actually came in, the state authority came into Manistee. There was, I think, three to five counties, and they might have gone to Grand Rapids because I know there's a couple cities with land bank authorities. And they chose different communities to come and showcase the progress that we've made. They're doing a really cool video with all the communities, so stay tuned for that. And just to promote and show what Manistee County's done and Michigan as a whole. So, very exciting that we're on 20 years of land banking in Michigan. Our land bank in Manistee County began in 2018. And so, with that state statute, that Public Act 258 of 2003, the statute gives quite a bit of discretion and flexibility to the authority for how they can acquire and dispose of property. They can purchase, they can accept donations, and they can sell or donate property with getting rid of it as well. So, looking at the flat handout that I gave you guys and what's on the screen, this gives a good visual of how land bank authorities operate. So, we see to the left the typical life cycle for an abandoned property. So, a lot of times, we see properties go blighted, they become vacant. At that point, a lot of times, they fall tax delinquent, go into foreclosure, they're sold at auction. And a lot of times, you know, we've all seen it, a speculative buyer says, "I'm going to pump some blood, sweat, and tears into this. I'm going to DIY it, fix it up." And then they realize it's, you know, not what it's worth, and then that cycle repeats. So, that's where the land bank authority can step in and use their authority through the state statute to clear the title because that is one of kind of the special authorities that that state statute gives them, is expedited, quiet, clear title. And so, they clear the title on the property. If it is salvageable in the land bank's eyes, they might partner with a contractor to rehab the property and then sell it to be occupied. A lot of times, we see these properties demolish and creating a clean slate for a developer to come in on a vacant property, or it can be put to use as public space. Another thing we see a lot of times is if we acquire very small pieces of land, they can go to side lots, you know. And even if there was like a nonconforming parcel, maybe a house came down, it's not quite big enough that, or not valuable enough for someone to want to rebuild on it. But at least if we're clearing up the blight and selling it to adjacent landowners, you know, we're not getting another structure on the tax roll, but we are getting improved property values for the neighborhood with eliminating blight and at least a little bit more land on the tax roll for the neighboring properties. So, that is kind of the typical process for a land bank authority, acquiring property through the foreclosure process, cleaning it up, and then getting it ready to be sold for redevelopment. There are a couple other additional benefits that landbanks can tap into. So, as I mentioned, we've seen some blight elimination funding flooded into the county. And it was actually, when it was all said and done out of the four rounds of funding, Manistee County acquired over $3 million in blight funding. So, very exciting. We saw quite a bit of that money funneled into the city as well. A lot of it went to demolition, but we did have some stabilization properties. I'm sure you guys are familiar with Hotel Northern. They received a $1.5 million grant to stabilize that building. So, very exciting to see something like that coming into our town. And we're hopeful that there may be additional blight funding or some other type of funding source for the land bank authority in the future. At this time, it was not cyclical, so we don't know for sure. But we're hopeful that the state and legislators will see how successful this funding was and look to do that again in the future. So, another benefit that the land bank authorities can tap into is brownfield plans. So, for brownfields, you know, typically we think of environmentally contaminated properties, blighted or obsolete. And now we have housing as well, for those that have stayed up to speed on the amendment to that Brownfield Act. But with a land bank authority, you can actually tap into brownfield incentives even if you aren't doing housing, you do not have an environmentally contaminated property. You can actually put your property into the land bank authority's name for the sole purpose of getting a brownfield plan approved, and it's with the understanding that it reverts back to the private landowner. So, that is another avenue that landbanks can be of assistance to our local communities. And in a nutshell, those are kind of the three main ways. So, like through the foreclosure process, through grant opportunities, and brownfield plans. So, I keep talking about this blight funding that we had come in, the column to the left, our recent success, you see that dollar number. And then, we had, under, under that funding, we had the demolition of four commercial properties. You'll see the picture of the old DAV building that came down in the city, demolition of nine residential properties. And it was really cool to see that we kind of had that sprout out as well. There were quite a few in the city, but Village of Bear Lake, their officials were very active in pushing their residents and finding people who might benefit from that resource. So, I think we have three, I think we have four in Bear Lake, and one is a stabilization project, three demolitions. And then, we had stabilization of two commercial properties. So, we had the one in Village of Bear Lake, and then we'll see the one in the city. At the bottom of this column, we see the 12234 Maple Street property in Bear Lake. So, this is one that the land bank acquired through that foreclosure process that I described. And they partnered with tiny developers and donated the property to them with the promise that they were going to fix it up and return it to the tax roll. So, just to give a couple examples of how the land bank has functioned in Manistee County and some of the success that we've seen. And due to limited resources, landbanks in rural communities like ours do tend to rely on partnerships to accomplish activities, whether that be with a local unit of government, a developer. And they have partnered with tiny developers who's nonprofit, but they aren't, you know, necessarily required to do that. They can partner with who they choose, even for-profit businesses, and Habitat for Humanity. So, one of the demolition properties, that land is intended, once that property is made vacant and cleaned up, that land is intended to be donated to Habitat for Humanity to construct a new home. So, very exciting. And you think about areas like southeast Michigan or metropolitan areas, you know, they're rolling in foreclosed properties, thousands of properties that they're dealing with. I think we have maybe half a dozen under our land bank right now. But it's really exciting to see the blight funding coming in and to think about the possibilities of what the land bank could be in the future. So, that is just kind of a high-level overview of what the land bank authority is and how we have been impacting Manistee County so far. So, with that, I will take any questions from you guys, and I appreciate your time tonight.
So, I just have one question. You talked about demolition of residential properties, and it seems like some of those were blighted properties that the owners released or relinquished, kind of turned over. Do you feel like that's a positive avenue to continue to pursue in the future if there's people that have blighted properties that they just can't take care of or fix up? Is that something that the land bank could step in, or is there kind of like a maximum on like, oh, we have four properties we can't take on anymore?
So, it is subject to funding available. I think in the future, it'll be interesting to see how the land bank might want to get creative on how to, actually, at our last meeting on Monday, we were talking about how we could kind of do, even if it's not an official revolving fund, some kind of low-interest loan program. That's all allowable under the state statute. I think that that really is a good avenue if we can make it something sustainable. And that's where the state land bank authority is really trying to push the legislator to, you know, try to fund something like this more prominently. Something else I wanted to add about the blight elimination funding, your question reminded me of it, is that with the private landowners that tapped into that funding, you know, I mentioned for brownfield plans, you have to transfer your property to the land bank's name to access that resource. So, with this, the private entities, the private owners, they kept their properties, but there was a seven-year lien placed on any property who agreed to the grant dollars. So, if they sell the property within the seven years, they're required to return that funding to the state. But after the seven years is up, they're, they're clean and free. So, I think, you know, for, for our longtime residents and really improving the neighborhoods, there's a handful of people who are like, you know, "I've had this house for so long. It was my grandma's. It was my parents. Got to the point where I couldn't do anything with it, but I would love to live back in Eastlake, or I'd love to come back into the city. This is just too much for me to deal with right now." So, it was a really cool thing to see people appreciate that and really tap into it. But no, I think that that clearing properties is like the main goal of the land bank. You know, we're not trying to be developers. We're not trying to redevelop properties. We want to get them ready for a developer, maybe have someone lined up if we have a particular property. If we have a good list of developers and we know what, what they're looking for, you know, have people that we can tap into. But yeah, I mean, any way that we can be creative and, and spread the funding as far as we can and clean up blight, I see that being what we'll continue to do.
Is the house on Fifth Street? Is that being torn down?
Yes. 231 Fifth Street. Yep, that one is the Habitat property.
Okay.
Could you give us a list of addresses of the ones you have torn down and the ones that are scheduled to be torn down, both residential and commercial?
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, they're going to rebuild on that one, Katie?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And I did just want to mention, I put a couple brochures in these flat handouts in the, the little flyer box out there if anybody from the public wanted to grab one on their way out. So.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a contract with the state of Michigan for trunk line maintenance. Every five years, the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, contracts with the city to perform maintenance on US 31 trunk line within the city limits. The state reimburses the city of the costs associated with the work. At this time, council could take action to enter into a state trunk line maintenance contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation and authorize the city manager to execute this agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniek?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a lease agreement with T-Mobile. T-Mobile leases space at the industrial water tower site. T-Mobile has acquired Sprint, who also leases space at the site. T-Mobile is canceling the Sprint lease and upgrading all their equipment. A new lease in the amount of $30,000 a year has been negotiated. The city attorney has reviewed the approved lease. At this time, council could take action to approve the lease with T-Mobile and authorize the city clerk and the mayor to execute these documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
Is that the same rate that we were getting before, or is that, the rate changed?
I can bring up that, let's bring up that list.
It increased, didn't it?
Yeah, it's a slight increase, but we're ultimately, T-Mobile and Sprint merged, so we're losing one, we're losing the Sprint lease, but yeah, it's slightly, let's see, where is the, yeah, so the T-Mobile lease is going to be $30,000 fiscal year 2025. So, it was almost $22,000, but we lose that Sprint lease, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniek?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of sale of city-owned property, 9.5-acre parcel in Renaissance Park. City received an offer to purchase the 9.5-acre par, city-owned property located in Renaissance Park in Manistee Township. Global Carrier Incorporated is proposing to use this parcel for a trucking warehouse distribution center, which is in line with the zoning requirements and productive covenants of this parcel. This, the lot is listed for $29. A sale price in the amount of $25,005 has been negotiated. The city manager recommends accepting the offer and authorizing a sale contingent on final city attorney approval of the purchase agreement. At this time, council could take action to accept the offer, offer and authorize the city clerk and mayor to execute all closing docs. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Isn't that a good price? I mean, with land selling the way it is, you're saying $29,000, we're selling it for $25,000. Seems to me like to be more.
Well, it's owned for industrial use out of Manistee Township, so it's not, and that's not a typical lot that you would have other places. And also, we do have restrictive covenants, although we're finding that perhaps just those lot portions, the smaller ones, are subject, subject to it. So, there's limited things. We want to see more development happen there, the warehouse, warehousing and trucking is kind of a good use, but that's kind of the prices we're getting from our commercial real estate agent. So.
I had the same question, but I have another one in addition. Do we anticipate the individual who's purchasing this or the corporation that they're going to develop, and has there been talks about what that might look like time period-wise?
So, they have to submit a site plan still to Manistee Township. So, we don't have a timeframe, but I believe we'd hope that they get started sooner rather than later. I can give you an update when I hear from them.
Or just keep us posted as you hear more?
Right now, nothing's happening there, right?
Correct.
That's just sitting there with nothing.
Anybody else? Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniek?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Consideration of authorizing a waiver of lien on 1018 High Street. City staff has been approached by an individual interested in purchasing 1018 High Street as, and as requesting a waiver of lien from the city to complete the transaction. The city had the blighted structure at 1018 High Street demolished in September 2021. A lien was placed on the property for the amount of the demolition. Since that time, the property was foreclosed by the advertisement and is now owned by Ait Donegan LLC. At this point, it is unlikely that the city could collect on the lien, however, the title company is requesting an explicit waiver of lien from the city to complete this new sale. The city negotiated $2,000 price to provide this. The city manager recommends accepting the offer and providing the waiver of lien. At this time, council could take action to accept the offer and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary waiver of lien documents contingent on the final city attorney approval. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniek?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Consideration of the Century Boat Club Show, consideration of the Century Boat Club Show. The 2024 Century Boat Club Show will be held on Friday, September 13th at, and Saturday, September 14th, 2024. Friday's event will include a welcome reception and free ship cruise on the lake. Saturday's event will include an in-water boat show at the Manistee Municipal Marina, boat display on River Street from Pine to Water Streets in front of the marina, and the Manistee Police Department's Best Barn Root Beer floats. Closure of River Street from Pine Street to Water Street is requested. At this time, council could take action to support and approve the 2024 Century Boat Club Show, subject to department approval. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Word, that was horrible. Any questions?
No dog tanks, right?
No.
Sounds like fun.
Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniek?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of applications at the tree commission. Tree commission vacancies were advertised by the clerk for appointment at the August 7th, 2024 regular meeting. No action was taken on August section, and the appointment was moved to tonight's meeting. Mayoral appointments prior to motion second, and council's voted support. The following applications have been received for the tree commission, two vacancies, terms ending 12/31/26. The purpose to oversee public tree program, mayoral appointment. At this time, I would like to appoint David Blair, 213 10th Street, to the tree commission with a term ending 12/31/26. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniek?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to appoint Nicholas LaCena, 374 8th Street, to the tree commission with a term ending 12/31/26. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt? Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniek?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now, we will have a report from Mark Whitliff from the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. My name is Mark Whitliff, Chair of the Planning Commission with the City of Manistee. Just want to say I'm happy to be here to review our happenings over the past year of the Planning Commission. So, we will get going on this. Purpose of the Planning Commission is to prepare and adopt physical plans for the city of Manistee and review, review developments, excuse me, proposals, both private and public, as set forth by Michigan Zoning Act. And the Planning Commission also acts in advisory capacity for the matters referred to, referred by the city commission. Our meetings are held on the first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM in council chambers. You're all invited. Wish, you wish you would come. And if you have any questions, Teresa or Kelso can answer those, or myself. So, maybe, okay. And just going through our members and give their seniority. Shelley Maberto, four years. Pam Weiner, five. Michael Shemansky, six. Marlene McBride, 14 years. The grandfather, Roger Yoder, 40 years. And the nice thing about this is Roger will be honored in September in Grand Rapids by the Michigan Planning Association for his time with the city of Manistee on Planning Commission. So, that should be exciting for him. Bob Silvinsky, who is the vice chair, has been with us for eight years. Myself, 14 years, probably about the past five or six as chair. Responsibilities, address and adoption of the master plan, which we are currently working on now. City of Manistee received from the Housing Development, Housing Development Authority, MISTDA, the Housing Readiness Incentive Grant for the city master plan update, excuse me there. Site plan reviews for commercial and industrial uses and special use permits. Zoning amendment requests, text amendment for, is a change to the text of the zoning ordinances, parcel splits, and planned unit developments, which will come back to city council for approvals. Work in private. city council for approvals. Work in progress. Master plan, working with Williams &amp; Works on updating. Redevelopment ready as community, recertifications. Progress. 300 Care Center Drive, which was just currently sold. 21 Cypress Street, Scooby Snack Shack, which I hope all of you have seen the new signs. Pretty darn cool. 77 Hancock Street, Tabernacle Church. Arthur Street, 91 Arthur, Lakeside Social, which they will be coming before the Planning Commission next month, on the fifth or seventh. 259 River, Milwaukee House. 95 Maple, the library. 86 Washington, North Channel Brewery. And 141 Washington Street, or the Northern Hotel Development. Study existing in future conditions of the city. Current housing issues, which we know there's many. Community concerns, priority sites, agency and partner roles. We work with the DDA. Promote public interest and understanding of the master plan, which I believe during the upcoming block party, we will, I believe Teresa will have a desk or a table there for people to give their input on. Form infrastructure reviews of proposed physical improvements and jurisdictions. Cooperate with neighborhood, neighboring local governments. Training education, which is ongoing with the Planning Commission. We need, all our planners are certified with MAPS, and they, we take about six, six hours of classes a year or more. MSU Managing Risks, Site Plan Review, Habitat for Humanity, Coastal Leadership Training, Redevelopment Ready as Community, and Future Training. Sorry if I'm going a little fast. Just slow me down if you'd like. City of Manistee Ready, Redevelopment Ready Communities. City of Manistee is a, I apologize. So redevelopment ready community since 2017, which we're instrumental on. This program is from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, helps makes projects and processes easier for new developments through the city. Questions? Any?
I just wanted to say that I've heard from a lot of people that when they come to the meetings, they appreciate how easy it is to talk to your board and that they feel listened to and heard. And I think that the list that you provided of projects you guys have worked on, just the two in the downtown area between the Milwaukee House and Scooby Snack Shack, I mean, those are really visible changes for residents to see. And I've heard nothing but positive things. So thank you for your work.
We have, we have a really good group of people. We have all different industries, surveyor, real estate, it's just all over. So we have a great mix of people. So really appreciate them, each and every one. Thank you.
Mark, yes, sir. Old hospital sold. Now, do they own the old civic club at Ninth and Vine, or is that included in the contract or agreement, or what?
That, I don't know. I mean, I honestly just, I heard about it yesterday and saw it in paper, so I don't know if, we haven't had anything come before us yet.
I thought they owned it, you know, the hospital.
Well, they did. The old best rehab did. Yeah.
I just didn't know if you knew or not.
No, 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 sir. It'd be nice to, you know, redevelop that.
Needs to be cleaned up.
It does. So. Any?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we will have a report from Teresa Waldo, Planning and Zoning Department.
Hello. Thanks for having me here tonight. So today, I'm going to be talking about the community development, building, planning, and zoning for the city. First, we're going to introduce our team, myself, the Community Development Director, Planning and Zoning. We have Jerry Blue, who's the building official. Kelso Kelly, who you were introduced to tonight, Administrative Assistant. And we also work with AGS. That is the Associated Government Services Skilled Trades Inspection. They handle electrical, mechanical, and the plumbing. What does the Community Development Department do? So we interact with developers and stakeholders, perform processes, records, permits, zoning, also do periodic inspections, land use changes, and zoning ordinances. We also work with the Ready Redevelopment Community Certification. Liaison for myself is for the Planning Commission, the Historical District, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Also apply for and implement priority grants as assigned. What does the building official do? He conducts onsite inspections at locations throughout the city, performs construction sites, he reviews blueprints, and utilizes BSNA software. He also does all rental inspections, maintains records, denies inspections, complaints, and any kind of investigations there are. He provides informational advice. He does code requirements to the public. He works with contractors, developers, engineers, and architects, and also does blade enforcement. Our new administrative assistant prepares meeting agenda packets. Very helpful with that. Recording minutes for the Historical District Planning Commission's ZBA. Files, scheduled appointments, returns phone calls, mailing, also uses the software. She also prepares reports and correspondence and assists our staff. So for building, building permits. Jerry handles the residential, commercial, new construction, renovation alterations. He also does permits for new construction, renovation, demo alterations. He also handles all rentals. We have three zones for our rentals. Right now, we're currently in zone one. Zone two is in 2025, and zone three is in 2026. Now, those rentals include anything and everything. Might be short-term, might be long-term, whatever's been registered. Also, the planning, planning and zoning, zoning permits that I handle. We've done eight business registrations. And with that, with the business registrations, I have help from the fire department and from the city clerk. Two driveway permits, which I have help with from DPW, the signed permits. That actually should say twelve permits for the signed permits. And also, we have what's called a PZE process. We designed this, excuse me, instead of having just basic permits, we kind of lumped them together and called them PZE processes, which is planning, zoning, and enforcement. And those are for minor home occupation, land use, and certificate of appropriatenesses. So building, excuse me. Jerry Blue, Jerry has office hours that are during the week, Monday through Friday. He's there. If he's not, he's out doing inspections, but you can always call him, make an appointment. So building permits. For 2024, he had a total of sixty-four building permits. The permit costs or the revenue that came into the city was fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Those projects cost were five million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. So for rental cycle in 2024, Jerry had a hundred and seventy-two when he started. Right now, he has eighty-six that are certificate of compliance. So that means the difference between that number, one seventy-two and eighty-six, are the ones that he is now contacting a second time, or some of them he's going to have to do a little bit more legwork. Rental cycle two is in 2025. That's going to be two hundred and thirty. Rental cycle number three, which is in 2026, is a hundred and seventy-one.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Rental cycle one?
Mm-hmm.
When you're saying one seventy-two to eighty-six, is that just because the difference hasn't responded, or have some of those people not passed?
They've mostly not responded. So then they get a second letter, and then from there, what Jerry does, yeah. But also, we're going to be getting some help from Toby, so that's going to be a great help for us. So next, I have the rental cycle map. So as you can see, at the very top is cycle one. And again, those are all rentals. Those are the dots that we have placed for the cycle one. Cycle two is where those are all located, and at the bottom is cycle three. So that just shows you what he's working on right now. So the City of Manistee initiated this program in 2000. The program requires that all residential units within the city be registered and are on a three-year cycle. This program helps to protect the public and safety, and also to ensure quality that the city rental properties are outstanding. An international property maintenance code is used for this inspection. So planning and zoning, myself, again, if I'm not in the office, you can contact me to make an appointment, or if I'm out doing inspections. So planning and zoning permits. In 2023, the land use was thirty-seven, sign fourteen. COA, which is again certificate of appropriateness for the Historical District, is twenty-three, and they had one ZBA. This year, currently, the land use is twenty, sign twelve. COA is eleven, and nothing for the ZBA. So planning and zoning permits for 2024 that I carried out were sixty-five for 2024. My cost, or my permit cost that I brought in for revenue was two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So those permits are the business registration we talked about already, the driveway permits, signed permits, the certificate of appropriateness, PZE, and all of those. So this slide is the same slide that Mark had used. These are our developments and improvements, everything that we've been working with builders, contractors, developers, and everything. All of those are there listed. So zoning in the city, as you can see the map there, our largest zoning area is the yellow, which is R2. So our R2 is a medium-density residential district. It consists mostly of single-family homes and neighborhoods. We also have multifamilies. We also promote attractable, walkable, healthy, stable living environment for families, so for singles and for the elderly. So grants awarded for this department. Of course, you've heard me talk numerous times about the CHIO grant. We were awarded the half a million dollars for homeowners for rehabilitation, working with Tracy Davis with Housing North, also working with Housing North on the Housing Readiness Initiative grant. That was awarded for thirty-three thousand dollars, and that is to help plan and update the master plan, land use policies, and also any zoning text amendments that we're going to be doing. So again, we're the redevelopment ready community. We're working with Andrew Stafford from the Chamber. We are a joint effort in that. So again, we're always looking for new investments, reinvestments, focusing on our benefits for grant opportunities, assistance. So I just want to name up a few people that we are very thankful to be collaborating with. We got the Chamber, the DDA. I put in there the City of Manistee because we couldn't be doing this without the whole entire city. It's not just us as the staff and directors, but also the whole entire city. We got the county, the tourism, Michigan State Extension Office, they're located right here. Mary Riley is wonderful to work with. Housing North. We have the Manistee County Community Foundation, Spicer, Williams &amp; Work, and the MEDC. So I want to throw this in there about implementation. So a couple things that, well, first, let me just read this. Implementation means carrying out a plan, intentional activities to turn evidence and ideas into real-world policies and practices that benefits people. It's about putting a plan into action. So just two minor things that I want to share with you that we've done so far is, number one, the Historical District. So the Historical District has the authority to review and approve all work permits and applications. A certificate of appropriateness is required with the Historical District, but to streamline this process, we're now having the HDC committee review the applications first. This may eliminate the need for application to go through the full HDC meeting, which only meets once a month. We'd really like to streamline this, and we've implemented this. But also, while regular building maintenance is permitted and encouraged in the downtown area, a work permit is still required for any and all alterations. A next thing that is just a little minor, but this has been recent for our Planning Commission, I've been doing a weekly newsletter. So that way, they're up to date and current on things, because they need to know those things. And they've really appreciated that. So I just have a few goals to go through. I want to work towards communication, excuse me, along with residents, communities, boards, commissions. Explore new opportunities. Working with Andrew has been helpful. Receive and maintain status and approve municipalities and redevelopment communities, RRRC. And then lastly, I want to share with you, I just put in the application, the CEDAM, Community Economic Development Association of Michigan, has offered an application that I submitted this week, that we're going to try to have a fellow come into the city to help out. So what a fellowship program is for a fellow to come in, is a fifteen-month program that places a seasoned professional in Michigan community to help with our potential goals and skills. They also, the program will help challenge, or I'm sorry, tackle challenges like strengths in the community with doing major projects. They can help with the master plan. They can help with new or revised zoning ordinances, the CHIO grant, any of those things. So I submitted that application, and we'll hear back in a couple weeks. There was also an application done in 2018, in that they participated in the Rising Tide project. Any questions?
You got a lot going on.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Citizens comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Nobody? Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Mayor. On Friday, I sent council some draft documents regarding short-term rentals and ordinance and some other backup items. I just, I think we put a date of Monday, the 26th. We got comments back, so we can have a productive meeting on the third and address any concerns you have. Thank you.
Any else? Mr. Bachman?
I'm all set, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Nope. All set. I got several emails from citizens this week, but it's going to take me a while to go through them and all this, email the appropriate people instead of bringing it up here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lundberg?
I just had one thing. Last, last time we were together, I wanted to throw a shout out to DPW for the Maple First Street crosswalk there that got put together. Thank you so much. I'm sure when I'm walking my kindergartners across that street, I'll be much happier and feel a lot safer. So thank you.
Scrub?
I just had a few things. I've had several people reach out about the parking lot behind the outpost. There's, which I think this was an issue before, maybe a different vehicle. There is a vehicle that's up on a jack. It's got things sticking out from it. Looks like maybe a oil container or something. I'm assuming it might be like one of the rentals across the street, because it's at the back. But they're like, they went over and knocked on the door, nobody's responded.
Can I please take a look at that?
Yeah. And then I've had several people that continue to reach out, but maybe it's just because things have been backlogged about the house at the corner of St. Mary's. It looks like things are getting added, like trailers and other vehicles, and they're saying that there aren't even plates or tags on some of it, so.
At the corner of St. Mary's in Washington?
Yes. Like, the grass is pretty tall. It kind of looks like it, I'm not sure if it goes with the house, but kind of, it kind of looks like maybe there used to be like a business there.
Yeah.
Structure, so.
Yeah, code enforcement.
Yeah, but several people have said that neighbors in that neighborhood have said they've reported it, and they haven't seen improvement. They said it's actually getting worse, so.
Okay. Trying to escalate that. Thank you.
Mr. Grabowski?
Bill, could you check with Barry from the TV and see why channel 198, a lot of people ask me, because they sit at home and they can't. And I asked Barry before, and of course, he was short, men, hoarding all that. So if he's doing anything with that to update it or upgrade it, or?
He is looking at options. So when the schools was, when the school over there, so during that construction that's going on, they actually took out the area where it was housed, over there on Sixth and Maple. But so we're trying to figure out if that's going to be put back at that location, or if it needs to be put at another location. He received some higher costs to move forward, so we're trying to see if there's some other options available. But Barry is working on gathering that information.
Okay. I knew I asked him at the DDA meeting, and he said he talked to you, so. Okay. Jeff, could I see you after we get done with the meeting? Thank you.
Anything else? Jim?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
Have we got an update about the bridge?
I sent an email today to see when that's going to be taken out. I haven't heard back. Unless Jeff heard anything else, but no. So I'll let everyone know when I, when I hear something.
That's all I have. I just got a question, because George is here. Manistee Catholic, are they, are they still exempt, even though from the tax rules because they're not operating?
Yeah, it's, yes, for right now.
Okay. Is there a time?
Is there a time?
Yep. Yeah. If a organization that is a charitable organization, uh, no longer is using the property for the charitable purpose, that, that can cause them to be taken off tax law. An example is sometimes you'll see a, um, housing for the priest or a minister, uh, but then if the priest or minister is now living there and they start renting it, that's, even though it might be owned by a church, that's not exempt. So.
Okay.
So if, yeah, at the beginning of 2025, if it's not operating as a.
It can go on the tax rolls.
Yes.
Okay.
Is somebody going to cut the grass at that place? Because my wife did the other day, and I thought she was tearing my ground. Grass cut her apart. Weeds are so thick and so high over there.
Can talk to code enforcement about that.
Yeah.
I have nothing else. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.